Meeting for two January to order at eighteen hundred or six P M, whichever is best. Okay, will, uh, will you call the roll, please?
Iverson.
Here.
Agresh.
Here.
Ayers.
Here.
Horne.
Here.
Patterson.
Here.
Penning.
Here.
Thomas.
Here.
Hundred percent.
Hundred percent.
Cool. I'd like to welcome everybody to the Planning Commission meeting. Never seen this many people in here. Hope everybody had a wonderful holiday and again, this is the beginning of our fiftieth anniversary year that we'll be celebrating. So we'll have more things to come along. We have a new member on the Planning Commission, Brandon Agresh, is it?
Yes.
Hey, Brish. Would you like to throw out some information about yourself or?
Yeah, I can't.
Um.
I'm Brandon. I live on the north side of Millersburg. I've got a wife and a four-year-old and a two-year-old. I like to fish. What other particulars are you looking for?
No, that's just fine. Just wanted to get to know you. Okay, at the first meeting of every year, we have to have elected a chair and a vice chair. And so at this point, I would like to open the nominations for chair. Anybody like to nominate?
I'd nominate you.
Yeah, nominate Doug Iverson.
There we go.
As chair.
I second.
Are there any other nominations? Okay, I guess we'll take a vote then. I have been nominated to be chair for this year. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Okay, and now time to open the nominations for vice chair. Chair will accept nominations for vice chair.
I'd like to nominate Monty Ayers.
Oh, son. And second.
Dang.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? All right, good. So then we'll have a vote on that. All those in favor of Monty being vice chair for the coming year?
Aye.
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 All those opposed, say no? All right, congratulations. All right. Okay, first item of every meeting is usually the minutes. So Shayna, if we could, do we have any corrections to the minutes or anything? I noticed one thing, that according to the minutes, the last meeting was adjourned by myself, but I was not here. I was, I believe, Will Conantik, is that his name? He adjourned the meeting, so that's the only... So I'll entertain a motion to take the minutes as modified.
Make a motion, pass minutes, modify.
Second.
Good.
All right, we had a motion and a second to obtain the minutes as they were. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? Okay, this evening, we're holding two public meetings and there was a sign-in sheet which I have here. And it wasn't quite clear as to which public hearing the people wanted to speak at. So when we come to your position, please let us know that you want to speak on this motion or the other motion. Okay. So the disclosures will be read. Staff will make a presentation and then everyone else who wishes to provide testimony. On the agenda item, we'll be given the opportunity. Members of the public will have three minutes of the testimony. We normally offer a rebuttal to the applicant if there are any questions for them. We do have a little new device over here that we use. That device goes green for the first two minutes that you're giving testimony. Then after two minutes, it becomes amber, letting you know that you have one minute left to go. Okay. After which the commissioner or the commission members can discuss the testimony and the items that need to be completed. Okay. So I'll now call to order the public meeting. Shayna, please read the disclosure statement.
All persons testifying will be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address. The city development code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report.
Thank you. Let's see, Matt, I believe it's up for you.
Okay. Thank you, Chair. Fellow commissioners, Matt Street presenting for staff this evening. Now, traditionally, what we do with an item is walk through kind of the criteria and explain how the item meets our code requirements. But since this is a code update with a lot of different things we're proposing to update in the code, I figured it would be far more fruitful to walk through each one of those changes, especially because we have a new planning commissioner who didn't get a chance to sit through our workshops. And so I was going to walk through each one of the code update items and then very lightly touch on the criteria at the tail end of that. Now, Chair, did you want me to go through the whole presentation and then talk about any of the code specific items at that point? Or do you want me to stop after each one and get some clarification questions out of the way?
I think you can go ahead and continue.
Okay, all right.
And we'll catch up with you on the.
Okay, sounds good. Well, as we go through the year, we kind of keep a running list of code updates that need to happen. Sometimes the code isn't clear enough. Sometimes the code is flat out wrong and needs to be fixed. Sometimes we find a better way to do things. And so we kind of keep each one of those until at the end of the year, we have a big enough group of them to just move them through at one time. So that's why this code update has several small pieces to it is because it's a collection of what we've collected over the year that needs to be updated in our code. That usually ends up happening about once a year. So at the last workshop for this code update, we explained that there were three general categories of updates that we wanted to do. The first one here that you see is says C F E C, and that stands for Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities. And this is a new measure that's being passed by the state that we have to make changes to our code to accommodate changes that the state feels are necessary for climate action and a few other things. And so these are mandatory adjustments that we're putting through for our code. And we'll talk more about those in detail as we move forward. The second update that we have is just the general text we just talked about, all the little fixes that we collected throughout the year. The third one up here that we talked about at the workshop was three actual map changes that we were proposing to do at that time. We're putting those on hold for now. We're not putting them in with this update. This is just a code text update, not a map update of any kind. So with that, I'll dive in. First, we're going to go through the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities updates. Now, again, our new planning commissioner might not be intimately familiar with what this is, but the governor told all the different state agencies that they had to do anything they can and use their executive abilities to implement measures that would help reduce the climate action that the state is trying to achieve. And so the state has kind of a planning division called the D L C D or the Department of Land Conservation and Development. And they took it upon themselves to put forward a lot of different rules in the state's rule system that would help curtail climate change. And a lot of those affect cities differently. There's a threshold of five thousand people. And as soon as a city goes over five thousand people, they have to actually rezone areas of their city where they're going to have climate-friendly areas. And that's pretty much where that text comes from. And those climate-friendly areas have to be walkable and have mixed use and have jobs close by and homes close by and lots of sidewalks. We don't have to do that yet because we're only at three thousand people here in Millersburg. We're not at five thousand yet. So we don't have to comply with a lot of that. But there were some of those requirements that the state handed down that all cities have to do. And that's what we're talking about here tonight are the ones that we have to do. They mainly revolve around parking. And so up here, you can see on the screen, what we have to do generally revolves around three different categories. We have to remove parking mandates, and we'll talk a little bit about what that means. We're going to adjust our parking regulations because they were very specific about some of our regulations that have to change. And then we also have to require that new projects put in conduit for electrical vehicle charging stations in parking lots. We don't have to require the stations, but we have to require that they run the conduit because that's the thing the state thinks is important to do at the development level. Chargers can be added later on, but to add that conduit is very expensive down the road. They want to get that done in the beginning. So removing parking mandates, what does that really mean? Well, our code has a table that we're going to talk about in just a moment that specifies how many parking spaces are needed for different kinds of uses. And what the state is saying is you essentially have to get rid of that. So there aren't any minimum number of parking spaces that businesses have to do anymore based on these changes. And so that doesn't mean that they don't have to do any parking at all. It doesn't mean they can't do parking. What it means is now it's up to them. And so if a new business comes in, that business gets to decide how many parking spaces they think they need, and that's how many they can build. But we won't be dictating that anymore. So the, this could result in people underparking their projects, but we don't really anticipate that's going to happen because most business owners really want to make sure they have enough parking to be successful. And so they get to choose that now on their own. It also doesn't mean that we won't have standards for our parking areas. We do still have standards. The state didn't change that. So the size of the stall and the fact that you have to have a curb stop and the fact you have to have landscaping, all those rules are still in effect. And if they voluntarily decide to build parking, they still have to comply with our parking standards. So that's not changing. So what you see here is the actual table. And there's a bunch of numbers underneath that. When we passed out all the changes we were proposing to our code as part of the staff report, we gave each one of them a number to try and make it easier to follow along as we were going through our staff report and as we're going through our presentation here today. And so the first bit where we're removing the parking mandates actually touches on a lot of different places in the code. That's why you see so many numbers up there. But really what we're doing is taking this table that exists, table fourteen from our code, and striking the whole thing so that there aren't any minimum parking requirements anymore. The parking mandates were really sprinkled throughout the code, but again, most of them were here in table fourteen, which is proposing to be completely eliminated. And the others were for things like caretaker units and R V parks and stuff like that. There were specific numbers in there. We had to get rid of those as well, which is why there were more numbers. So these next three changes pertain to parking lot standards specifically. And the first one that the state is requiring is that fifty percent of all parking lots have shade from trees. And so we had something very similar to this in our older version of our code, but this is far more specific what the state is doing. So when somebody comes in for a new project, they're going to have to show us a landscape plan and show us that in fifteen years' tree maturity, at least half of the parking lot will be covered by those shade trees. The next, next, the state is mandating that we add carpool and vanpool preferred spaces for any new businesses that are coming in. Again, these aren't retroactive, so any new businesses that would come in would have to comply with this. Last, a little bit of an odd one, the state is requiring that we allow current existing parking lots to be redeveloped, but only if it's specifically for bus stops and bike parking and a few other things they have specifically listed, most of which aren't really applicable in our city, but we've added those changes anyway, specifically because the D L C D asked us to, and we'll touch on that in a moment as well. So matter of fact, we'll touch on that now. So as some of you may, as some of you may recall, anytime we do an update to our development code, we have to notify the state, specifically that group we were talking about, their version of a planning department. It's called the D L C D. We have to notify them and then they can make comments. They don't usually make comments, but this time we did get an email from them that they specifically said was an informal email. It wasn't an official submittal. It wasn't an official letter to us, but it was an informal email where they first off praised what we're doing because they liked the fact that we're complying with the state mandates. We kind of have to. But as we explained in the staff report, most of the changes that they asked us to make were already reflected in the code updates that was passed out in the version you had in your staff report. But there was one change that we, that they asked for that we didn't make because it wasn't straight out of the state's rules and wasn't a requirement of the state. But we had a section where if somebody wanted to revise or redo a parking lot that already existed and put in some other use on that parking lot, we said that they would have to go through an entitlement process and come to you folks and explain to you what they wanted to do. And you could deny it if you wanted to. We added some standards as to why you would. And then we also required that they provide a study. And that study needs to analyze the impacts of the parking lot change, specifically in how it's going to affect the surrounding community. And the state asked us to strike that whole section. We're not going to. That doesn't mean that we don't comply with all the state's requirements. We absolutely do. Matter of fact, the D L C D said that. They were just asking that we get rid of that because it didn't match the idea that they were going for with climate-friendly and equitable communities. They're happy to get rid of any parking. And we thought, that's okay, but we wanted to be a whole lot more cautious than they did because we feel there actually could be impacts to the surrounding communities. So we added all those changes that the D L C D asked for, we actually made before the staff report went out. So the version you've had in front of you already reflects all those changes. But we didn't include the email itself to the planning commission, so you could read that. So we made sure to do that in the memo that we passed out to the public and to you guys. We have that there as well. It's just a reflection of the email that they already gave us. So that wraps up the Climate Friendly and Equitable Communities changes. Now we'll look at the standard text changes that staff is proposing that we've collected throughout the year. And the first up is some cleanups to our definition section. The first one is related to daycare. And what we're saying here is that if you want to run daycare out of a home in a residential area, that's okay, but somebody has to live in that house. And that might seem silly to you, but what that means is that somebody can't buy a vacant house and use it just for daycare and have nobody live there at all. Because now it's a business and it's not a home. Has to be a home first and then a business. So this is clarifying that somebody has to live in the house in order to have daycare run out of that house. Next up was a slight modification to our changes for definition of an accessory dwelling unit. And this is actually something we missed on the last code update. The state requires us to allow all single-family homes to have an accessory dwelling unit. And we didn't clarify that duplexes are also the same thing in the state's mind as a single-family home. So now we're clarifying that if you own a duplex, you can still put an accessory dwelling unit on that property as well. And we didn't state that clearly enough before, and now we cleaned that up. Number twenty-one here was actually something that we were proposing to do in our code update, but we've since changed our mind and we've removed that from the update. You may say, well, then, Matt, why was it still on this table? Well, the table had been created. It was already through all the workshops. We felt it was going to be more transparent to leave it in there and to say we're skipping that than it was to pull it all together. So we left it in there as a placeholder, but it's void. We're not proposing to do that change anymore. So the code sections that regulate subdivisions in our code were clearly established with residential divisions in mind. However, not all subdivisions are residential. Some are industrial and commercial as well. And those have slightly different requirements. And some of those requirements are the same. Some of them are different. So these changes that we're proposing are going to clarify what's residential and what requirements fall on residential and which ones fall on commercial and industrial and which ones apply to both of them. So these changes make that a lot more clear. This also adds the ability for a shopping center to do subdivisions. Now, you might say, what does that look like? Well, just as an example here, I've got this blue box on the screen. You might have a project like this where you wanted to sell just that first building to somebody and then they could own the dirt that's under it, but they wouldn't own the parking or the project around it. And so we finally have a way for them to do that. You see this a lot with shopping centers, like where you'll have Carl's Jr. on the corner. Well, Carl's Jr. likely owns the dirt underneath that. And Safeway owns the dirt under the store, but the parking lot is all owned by whoever owns the shopping center. And they have easements to allow them to share all that parking. We didn't have a way to do that before because quite frankly, in Millersburg before, we didn't have a need. But now as we're growing and things are changing, we've had a few people ask about this, so we went ahead and added that ability as well. So now we're on to accessory dwelling units. It seems every time we do a code update, we're talking about accessory dwelling units. This is probably the most changed section of our code because we seem to change it every time. And here we are proposing some more changes once again. And so what we want to do is propose some clarification and some new ideas. First, we wanted to clarify the relationship between detached garages and accessory dwelling units because we had somebody come in and want to have a detached garage with an A D U accessory dwelling unit attached to it. Our code really wasn't that clear on how we operate that way. So we've cleaned that up. And the new text says that a detached garage is just an accessory structure. But if you want to put an accessory dwelling unit on the side of that, then the accessory structure rules apply to the garage and the accessory dwelling unit rules apply to where somebody's going to be living, the accessory dwelling unit. And the rules for those are all already in the code, but that clarification helps us understand how we regulate the two, whether together. We're also proposing to increase the maximum size allowable with an accessory dwelling unit. When we first adopted the rules for A D Us or accessory dwelling units, we were forced to do so by the state. And so we went with the smallest size possible that we could do for an accessory dwelling unit as far as the maximum is concerned. And that was six hundred and fifty square feet. People can't build one bigger than that. Well, since then, we haven't seen a lot of demand for accessory dwelling units. We haven't seen many people pull permits for them. And we've had an awful lot of people complaining about the six hundred and fifty square foot maximum size. So you may recall when we redid our comprehensive plan recently, the housing section of our comprehensive plan, we said we would revisit that because clearly some people are frustrated with the size. So we're proposing a change here that would allow it to be a little bit bigger. And what we did was we married it to the rules we currently have for an accessory structure. And what that says is the six hundred and fifty maximum or six hundred and fifty square foot maximum for an accessory dwelling unit is staying. We're not changing that. But what we are saying is that if you have a lot that's bigger than ten thousand square feet, then you can get a little bit bigger accessory dwelling unit for every one thousand square feet you are larger than the minimum lot size. So specifically what it says here is you can have an additional hundred square feet of floor space for your accessory dwelling unit for every one thousand square feet of lot size over eleven thousand square feet. But we left in there a maximum dwelling unit size of nine hundred square feet. So how does this comply to the surround or how does this measure up against the surrounding communities? We have a table here on the screen that talks about that. We have Lebanon on here, Jefferson and Corvallis. And you can see that generally speaking, it's about nine hundred square feet is the maximum size for an accessory dwelling unit in most surrounding cities. A few are larger, some are smaller. But by doing this change and allowing it to go up to nine hundred square feet, you can see we're pretty much in the middle with everybody else. So we felt that was a reasonable change. And that's what we're proposing with this current change on accessory dwelling units. These next changes are pretty easy ones. We're proposing to change the word chicken to foul. Now, that might seem silly, but foul actually does mean a broader category than chickens. And we weren't trying to outlaw other foul and not chickens. So we're changing that word. That's very easy. The second one is we're adding some clarification to exotic pets. Can't have lions and tigers and bears in the city of Millersburg. We didn't say that overtly before. Now we're saying it overtly. Can't do that. But we did make a mistake. I made a mistake in the version that you all have in front of you. And there was a last sentence in there that specifically tried to clarify that pigs weren't allowed. But in that sentence, I said bovine aren't going to be allowed in the city of Millersburg. Okay, blame the city slicker. I goofed. A bovine is apparently not a pig. A bovine is a cow. And so we're going to fix that. What we meant to say was pig. I'm going to switch that to swine. And I personally apologize to all the cows that live in Millersburg. I wasn't trying to chase you off. We're going to leave you. So that was an error. We fixed it. I even reached out to our resident farmer on the planning commission and specifically explained it to him because I thought he was going to be terrified that I was trying to kick his cows out. I'm not. It was just a goofy error. Okay, number twenty-five talks about street names. And there's very little information in our code on new street names and how new street names come about. Traditionally, in this city and in other cities as well, the developers get to make up the names of the streets, and that's fine. But what we're proposing to add here is kind of a city veto for people who want to come in with street names that we feel aren't appropriate. And that's already happened several times. And we've worked with developers and they've been kind enough to go ahead and go with our suggestions in the past. But now we have a baked-in veto right to be able to say, even if you're not feeling gracious, you're not going to use that street name because Middle Street and Middle Road are a little bit hard for folks to follow. So that's an example. It's not in Millersburg. But now this grants the city veto rights over street names. So number twenty-six is our commercial office design standards that we have. And these are fairly new. And we've kind of changed them a lot since they first came out. And we're proposing another change here. We're proposing to strike a requirement. This required architecture all the way around the building. We call that three hundred and sixty-degree architecture. But what we didn't stop to realize when we did that is sometimes there are walls of buildings that face another building and no human being can ever see them. And the idea of forcing people to add stone wainscoting on a wall that nobody could possibly see from the public seemed a bit extreme. And so we're proposing to change this. It still requires all of those walls to have architectural features if they're visible from the public. So as far as the public goes, you won't see this, any impacts from this change. But we just felt it was more appropriate for walls that can't be seen by the public. So the historical zoning overlay is the next change we're talking about. When the code was totally redone four years ago, we didn't have a historical zoning section or anything that talked about historical zoning. But there is a state goal, goal five, that talks specifically about the need to preserve historic spaces. And so we added a historical section to our code mostly to make sure we complied with state goal five. Now, when we put it in, I have to be honest, we didn't really think anybody was actually going to use it. But you might remember, we just recently had the Grange come in and ask to be designated with a historical zoning overlay. And we did that. We brought it to you folks. It passed, no problems. But while we were processing that, we realized there was a lot of sections in our code that really needed some attention. And so this is a pretty drastic overhaul to our zoning code overlay section. But let me walk through what it does here. It changes the historical committee to a historical commission. We felt that was more appropriate because they're making land use decisions. And so the title commission seemed like it was a lot more appropriate. There was also no noticing requirements in the historical section. It said we had to notice, but it didn't tell us how or what or when or how long or how many people or how many feet out. We fixed that. Added those requirements back in and they matched the other requirements as well. There were some special timing requirements specific to the historical section that would have been only them that had those specific timing for notices in your newspapers and stuff like that. And so we fixed that to marry it up with all of our other case types so that it's more uniform. It makes a lot more sense to the public and to staff. It didn't say anything about appeals. So we've added some information in there for appeals. If you want to appeal, now it's specific as to how and who it goes to. It also didn't talk about how to process these cases. We made the assumption that they were like certain other cases. So that's how we processed that at the time. But it didn't state this was a type three or a type four or a type two. So we cleaned that up. So now when somebody wants to add a new historical designation, it's now a type four, which goes to the city council for a final action, but comes to you folks for a review and recommendation to city council, kind of like this code change we're doing right now. If somebody wants to demolish a historical structure or move it, then that becomes a type three. That would come to the planning commission for an action. And if they wanted to alter the exterior of a historical building, that would also come to the planning commission for an action. So we've just ironed that out and made it a lot more clear for folks moving forward. Number twenty-eight talks about some clarifications to street trees. The code speaks to street trees and even loosely requires street trees, but it wasn't really clear that they were an absolute requirement. Well, we've removed that ambiguity to make it dead clear that street trees are required. And then these changes also help point the reader to where those standards are, our engineering guidelines. That way they know where to look for the standards on how street trees should operate, how far apart they need to be, the kinds of street trees, things like that. Number twenty-nine speaks to our manufactured home standards. Most of these come from the state, and so we don't make up a lot of them. But our code didn't talk about requiring skirting on manufactured homes. Now, most of the time, people put that in on autopilot, so it wasn't really a problem. We didn't have any unskirted manufactured homes in Millersburg, but we did feel like it was an important thing to have because we do say in our code that manufactured homes need to look like regular single-family homes. Well, skirting helps that happen. So we've just clarified that, that skirting is required for manufactured homes. Now, next was R V covers. We did bring this specifically to the planning. We did bring this specifically to the planning commission. We talked a lot about this fairly recently. We heard what you folks said. And so what you see here are the changes reflecting what the commission directed us to do when we brought it to you recently for a workshop. So let's talk about what that is. We added a whole new section of standards specific to RV covers. Before, we were just saying an RV cover is like an accessory structure, but it didn't really say that in the code. So now, there's a whole new section of standards specifically for RV covers. The 200-square-foot rule still applies. So if it's under 200 square feet, you don't need a building permit for it, so it doesn't have to come through us at all. If it's over 200 square feet, you have to get a building permit for it. That's not a new rule. We're just clarifying that. We are now saying that metal RV covers are now permitted. That is new. We didn't do that before. We were telling folks it had to match the house, even in the material finish, like wood and stain and things like that. Now, metal is allowed. We did clarify some setbacks that are specific to RV covers. And the reason why is because we wanted to take the setback from the edge of the roof line of the RV cover and not from the metal uprights. And the reason we want to do that is because we didn't want somebody to have a cover so large that went over onto the neighbor's property and ended up dropping water off of their RV cover onto the neighbor's lot. They could do that if they wanted to, if they used the standard setback requirements, which measures to the wall, not the overhang of the roof. So here, we are being very specific that it has to go from the overhang of the roof. And this is the only kind of structure we have in our code with that specific requirement. We also clarified that there is no setback requirement from the house. If you want to put this right next to the house and bolt it onto the house, that's fine. No problem there. That's allowed. We did talk about the look of the RV cover a little bit insofar as we specified what colors they have to be. They have to be earth tones, or they have to match the house, either the trim color from the house or the main color from the house. But it has to be one of those. We did add a requirement for the height limit. We said there's a 20-foot height limit for RV covers. But if it's more than 20 feet away from the property line, you would then use whatever the setback requirement is, or the height requirement is, in that zone. So 80% of our homes here in Millersburg are in the residential low zone, and the residential low height requirement is 35 feet. So really, what this is saying is if you're more than 20 feet away from your property line, you've got five acres, then you can go with a 35-foot tall RV cover, and that still would comply with our code. Moving on. We're going to talk about some clarifications that we're adding to flag lots. Now, flag lots can be a little bit confusing. And we've had some folks who were very confused about where the setbacks started and stopped. And what I mean by that is sometimes it's very difficult to tell where the front of a property is. And we have a 15-foot front setback, 20 rear setback, 5 feet on the sides. But what's the side and what's the front when it's on an odd lot? So this example you see here, the square one might be really easy to tell, right? The front on that's pretty easy. Even though it's a flag lot, the front is the one that's facing the street. No problem. But in our second sample here, you see now it becomes a little bit harder to tell what the front is and what the back is. And so what this is doing is it's not saying any one direction is the front, because all flag lots are different. What this is saying is that the community development director now has the ability to say this will be the front, and all setbacks will be taken from that. So we've added a little bit of flexibility in where that goes. And in some, you could say, clarification to it, because now, we can actually determine where the front setbacks apply and where the side and rear and all those apply. Now, we're talking about some figures. These are figures that have been in our code since it was approved four years ago. But a lot of these figures were misleading. Some of them were flat-out wrong. And so we're finally addressing the figures and cleaning these up in our code. So what I've done to show you what we're up to here is I've got the current version of the exhibit here on the left, the figure on the left, and then what we're proposing to change on the right. And this, what we're looking at here, is from the accessory structure section, Section 315 from our code. And the setbacks on there were incorrect. You see, it said 5 and 10 before. That's actually incorrect. It should be 5 and 8, depending on whether it's a one-story or a two-story. So we're proposing to fix that. And then, the structure must also be detached from the house in order to qualify as an accessory structure. Now, this is supposed to be showing you the setbacks for accessory structures, but it was connected. Well, if it's connected, it's part of the primary structure. So that was just flat-out wrong. So what we've done here is gotten rid of that breezeway between them to make it perfectly clear that that's a detached structure and therefore meets that definition. Figure 28. This is from our definitions section. And we have a part of our definitions that talks about zero lot lines. And what we always meant by that was that you could have a duplex and put a property line right through the middle, and that's allowed. So one, a duplex is on one single-family lot. The other one is on another single-family lot. That's fine. And there were specific rules for how a zero lot line applied. But the graphic showed row houses, which wouldn't even be allowed in the city of Millersburg. So we fixed that by getting rid of the row houses and putting on there what we really meant, which was duplexes. So figure 60 here, very similar to the other one. This is from our accessory dwelling unit section. And this, again, showed setbacks that were wrong. It showed 10-foot setbacks here. That's not correct. So on this side, we just simply removed those setbacks altogether. And then again, it was showing that the structure was attached, but they were calling it an accessory dwelling unit. Well, it's not really an accessory dwelling unit if it's attached. And so we've removed that breezeway between just to make it more clear. Last figure I want to talk about is figure 63. And this figure here is from our flag lot access section. And this basically showed that you could, the graphic seems to show that you can have two houses on a flag lot in the back. And that's technically true, but one of them would be much smaller, because it would be an accessory dwelling unit. It couldn't be bigger than 650 square feet, right? And so this graphic was a little bit misleading in that it showed two of the same-sized structures on that flag lot. So here on this side, we've just simply removed one of those structures, so it's not so misleading. And we did check with the author of these graphics. Staff revised these in-house, but we double-checked with Mr. Foster to make sure that he was fine with those changes, and he liked what we did. So the next one that I want to talk about, we did bring to the planning commission briefly and talk about it. And this is called a single-room occupancy. And this one's a little bit confusing. And we brought this to the planning commission last time. The planning commission said that you wanted to see it in context. You wanted, we brought it to you without showing you the actual changes we were proposing. Now, you've seen the changes in context. And we'll see if the planning commission is in favor of this or not in favor of this, but we'll talk about it. And what is a single-room occupancy? A single-room occupancy is a type of housing where somebody rents out rooms in their house. And this has become a real important issue with the state recently, because a lot of cities are trying to outlaw single-room occupancies. And what a single-room occupancy is, is if somebody's renting rooms in their house, that's not quite a single-room occupancy. But as soon as they rent more than four bedrooms in their house, the whole structure is considered a single-room occupancy. And cities were outlawing this, and the state didn't like that, because they feel like this is a pretty vital missing piece of our housing puzzle in our housing shortage. And so they wanted to make sure that cities didn't outlaw these. So they passed a new law that says cities aren't allowed to say no single-room occupancies. Now, here in Millersburg, we've always allowed them. Our code wasn't specific to them. But if somebody rented rooms, that wouldn't be inconsistent with what was allowed in the code. So we wouldn't have said anything one way or the other in Millersburg. So we were already complying with what the state said. Now, the attorneys and myself thought it would be best to go ahead and clarify this in the code. And that way, if somebody was looking in from the state level, it was very clear that we were complying with this new state requirement. So we've added a definition for single-room occupancy. And then, we added that as a permitted use in each one of the residential zones. Now, last time we brought this to the commission, there was some heartburn with this, because it made it look like we were trying to court that kind of development. We didn't see it that way. I can understand how you would see it that way. If we got rid of this improvement altogether to the code and just left it silent, we would still be complying with the state's requirements. So we don't have to do this. It just makes it more clear that we're complying. That's the reason staff was proposing that and why we wanted to bring that in. So moving on. This text, number 34 here, this text talks about the clear-vision areas. And our code seemed to imply that clear-vision areas, which means the area on a corner has to stay clear so when drivers come up, they can see oncoming traffic one way or the other. Our code section was specific to residential streets and said nothing else about any other streets. So one could infer that you only needed clear-vision areas in residential areas. That's not what we meant. That's not what we wanted. And so we're trying to revise this to make sure that it's clear for all streets. Now, having said that, we also wanted to add in a little bit of flexibility that wasn't there before. So this allows the city engineer to grant a little bit of flexibility when a one-size-fits-all approach to this rule is impractical or flat-out inappropriate. There could be a lot of reasons why that clear-vision area can't be clear. And they've designed the intersection in a way that accommodates for that and mitigates for it. Now, the city engineer has the flexibility to say, yeah, this alternative is going to be okay. We don't have to be very hard and fast with the way this is applied. This is the last one, number 35. This is the last and probably the least significant change that we're proposing to make. This is actually just fixing an error in one of our tables here. Now, it's true that when we did the code, we allowed the ability for staff to just flat-out fix what we call Scrivener's errors, which means to flat-out error in the code. We can fix that without coming to the planning commission or the city council. We can just go ahead and make that change. This probably fit under that umbrella. But we figured, since we're doing this big code update, we'll throw it in there anyway and bring it forward to you. But this actually had the trail on the wrong side of the street in the general industrial zone. We wanted it on the other side of the street. And so we're just fixing that error in this part of the code. So on to the criteria here. I'm not going to go over the criteria in great detail. Our staff report does that. But the proposed edits that we're proposing here do meet all the city criteria. They meet all of the state's requirements in the Oregon Administrative Rules and the Oregon Revised Statutes. And the DLCD even reviewed that and confirmed that they met all those requirements. They're also consistent with all the state planning goals, and that's also outlined in detail in your staff report. So that brings us to our staff recommendation, which is on the screen. But before I go into that, I wanted to go over a memo that was handed out to the planning commission as well. If any members of the public would like a copy of this, I didn't anticipate this many people, but I have some copies over here as well, if you wanted to see it. But this simply, we got a couple of different emails from some folks in our city that were asking for some specific changes. The first one asked for us to basically double the size that we were proposing to do for our accessory dwelling units. They wanted us to have a maximum of 1,200 square feet. And it was our 1,800 square feet. And they wanted us to double the increments that we go up. But as you saw in that slide example, none of the cities have an 1,800-square-foot maximum for ADUs. So we didn't think that was appropriate, and we left the code the way it was. The second one was I included in here the email from the DLCD. Again, we made those changes already, but I neglected to put the email in your staff report. So now, it's here in this memo. So you have that, and so it's introduced as part of the record. And then, we also got an email from somebody who was asking us to make a all-new change in a different part of the code that wasn't even one of these 35. And so we simply explained to him, hey, you know what? We love the idea. It's a good idea. We will absolutely work towards making this code update that you're suggesting. But we got to do it next time. This one's kind of already done. And he was fine with that. And there was no heartburn there. He said, great, as long as we're going to get to it sometime. He was okay with it. So you'll probably see his requested change sometime next year. So before I hand this back over to the chair, I just wanted to clarify a few things for the public here as well and our public that's online as well. We're about to go into the part of the hearing where we have public testimony. And I wanted to clarify how this works. Public testimony is supposed to be just that. It's supposed to be testimony from the public, where you come and provide additional information to our planning commissioners. It's not designed to be a back-and-forth question session. You're welcome to ask questions. Our planning commissioners aren't obligated to answer those. Staff will try to get back to you with answers to those questions as we move forward. But it's really just to provide these folks with any information that you want to provide them with. Either you agree with some of these changes, you don't agree with the changes, and why you don't, and explain that to these folks. We've got a timer here, like you said, that will give you the three minutes that we need for you to stay within that public testimony window. And then, I also wanted to touch on one other thing that might be the reason that most of you were here. And it's a little confusing, and I'll explain to you what I mean. The notice that we sent to you had a box at the top that had some scary language in it, for sure, that said this might affect your property values. It's true that it said that. That's required, because any time we do an update to the code that might actually affect people's property in any way, the state says we have to do what's called a Measure 56 notice. And that Measure 56 notice, which the people of Oregon voted on, requires certain specific language to be included when we update the code. So we updated that, consistent with the state's requirements for what we had to do. But we, as you can see from this presentation tonight, we don't think these are going to negatively impact people's property values, but we had to include that box based on the state's rules and requirements. So I just wanted to explain that too before we started. So with that, Chair, I'll turn this back over to you.
Okay, thank you very much. Now's the time that we are supposed to take public testimony. So what I would like to do is I'd like to invite you up, if you have any positive testimony from the, what Matt presented, if you are in favor of those changes.
And if I may, Chair, we, we'll deal with the people in the room here first, and then we can go to online and see if anybody wants to speak from online as well.
Okay. Anybody make some positive comments concerning the matter at hand? Yes. Well, you don't have to.
Do I have to speak through this thing?
Yes.
So folks on mic can hear you. Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. So my name is David Raymond. I live at 6219 Elena Street Northeast and in the Morning Star Edition. And the favorable thing that I wanted to make mention of was the clear path to see down the road. I know that coming out of mine, my addition, it's hard to see on Old Salem. And traffic moves pretty fast right there. I think if those things are addressed, it's going to make it a lot better for the, what, 32 homes or however many are in that little space. That's our only way in and out. So I like the part where you guys are making those changes and making sure that we have clear spaces to see down the road.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? And I'm sorry, sir, I didn't, I didn't catch your name again? Yes? David, okay. All right. Are there any more positive comments? Okay, then we should probably turn it over for people who want to make negative comments. And I think, I think Matt pretty much explained the primary concern that was going on here was the fact that, oh my God, it's going to affect my property values. That got everybody's attention. Okay, yes, please come up.
My name is Arthur Wallace. I live at 5999 Tuscan Loop. I don't necessarily have a negative comment, only a recommendation for a change to the proposed changes. A change, change. I would like to, I would like to respectfully request you reconsider the proposed setback rules for RV covers, line item 30. I am proposing an additional exception, allowing RV covers up to 12 feet in height to have a minimum setback of 3 feet. First, I want to address the limited applicability of the proposed changes. Using Google Earth, I was able to estimate the most side yards in the Millersburg suburbs are about 16 feet wide, ranging from about 15 to 17 feet. The proposed setback rules require a minimum of 5 feet. Unfortunately, this leaves less than 12 feet for an RV cover. This is important, because RV covers have standardized sizes. The width available for a single vehicle is 12 feet. By allowing a minimum setback of 3 feet, this will let most of the residents in the city take advantage of the new proposed rule change. My proposed maximum 12-foot height for the smaller setback was derived mathematically. One of the concerns with setback is shading a neighbor's property. The current proposed rules allow a maximum height of 20 feet on a 5-foot setback. A 12-foot-tall structure 3 feet away will cast the same shadow, the same distance as a 20-foot structure 5 feet away. Given the worst-case scenario of a structure along a northern face at the winter equinox, the shadows will be equivalent. Conveniently, RV covers also have standardized sizes, and that standard height being twelve feet. Another discussed, another concern to discuss by the board during the workshop was runoff. Most RV covers already being an RV pad, runoff should already be managed. For covers below the two-hundred-square-foot building permit cutoff, that leaves sixteen feet or less of edge to be managed, given the standard twelve-foot width. Having an edge temper water runoff is actually preferable to an RV gutter that drips in a single spot. For covers over two-hundred square feet, these edge cases, managing soil erosion is already part of the building permit process. In conclusion, I respectfully request the commission add an exception to the changes in chapter thirteen or three-point-one-five, allowing a minimum setback at three feet for RV covers less than twelve feet.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you for your input. Any other comments? Okay, I think we're done there. Now I'll hear from anyone. Anyone else wish to speak about this, positive or negative? Anybody online?
If you're online and you wanted to speak to the planning commission, just go ahead and unmute your microphone and let me know. And then I'll put you on the house system where the whole room can hear what you're saying. Not hearing anybody or seeing anybody on mute, so it looks like everybody online is...
Okay, so that's pretty much the end of testimony. Does staff wish to make any comments concerning the note that was made? I guess it's about time to close the public hearing. Okay, I'll close the public hearing at eighteen fifty-one. Let's see. Now the commission has a chance to talk about these things. I, I do have a couple of things that are basically typographical type things on page forty of the packet. Item, uh, there's an item number forty-two, and I think that's basically, somebody changed four to two and didn't delete the four.
The four struck out. It's just hard to see because they have a line right there. Yeah, okay, got it.
That's mine. Uh, the next thing I have that's confusing me is on page fifty-eight. It's three-point-sixteen-point-zero-one-zero. Okay. And it talks about a person converting an attic or a portion of their basement. I, I don't see how that could be enforced or how, how you can tell a person who owns a house that he is making an accessory dwelling unit by converting a room in his own house. That, that's my concern.
Okay, uh, that's primarily driven through building permits. And so if somebody wanted to come in and get a building permit to seal off one part of the house from another part of the house and add a second entrance to that second part, and then add a kitchen. Kitchen is really the tool when it comes to an accessory dwelling unit. That's where we really see, yes, this is an EDU, or no, it's not. But they would come in for a building permit to separate those, and, um...
Okay, I, I didn't see that there. That's what was confusing to me.
That's not really part of our land use code. That was part of the building code. That's why you don't see it here.
Okay.
That would be the difference.
Okay, my mistake then. Uh, on, also on page fifty-nine, uh, number eleven, wording is really kind of confusing. I just, I didn't understand it at all. I mean, uh, just, it's a pretty sizable paragraph, and I don't understand what they're trying to get across there. Am I not seeing anything there, or...?
Well, I can certainly take another look at that. Often when I bounce things off of Kevin and Janelle Moore, we end up with something that's a bit more readable. So why don't we take this paragraph and have the three of us chew on it some more?
Okay, okay.
See if we can't get to the point, but in a little bit more clear way.
Right. And, uh, page sixty? There's a statement there that says, "The city has authority to approve or deny proposed street names." I think we need to define city as planning commission or, uh, you know, some, somebody official. Because I don't know anybody whose title is city.
So we can just add manager in right after that and have the city manager. That's probably the easiest.
Fine with me. I mean, it's just...
Good call.
Just determine it. And that's about all that I have.
Great, thank you.
I had a couple of questions, and maybe, I don't know if they're in the right time or appropriate, but the, the renting a room in your house. Does that, is kind of, what hits me is like the, the daycare thing. Do people have to live there to rent a room in their house? Can they rent all the rooms?
No, and the state doesn't let us say they, that we have to have that be owner-occupied. The state allows somebody to rent out every single room in their house, and it doesn't have to be owner-occupied at all.
All right, that was a question, and also, um, and again, I'll probably butcher it because I remember us talking before about when we grow, we'll have like confined space living or, you know, smaller, um, maybe apartment complexes or more duplexes, triplexes, where you have less than ten thousand, of that kind of stuff. Does that kind of thing help out with those coming in the future?
Yes, it would, because once you become a, a single-room occupancy, and that's your stated use, then that's something that the state can see, there's more people living on that property, and they can help us track that. So yeah, that would help us in that future. Although the climate-friendly areas that are triggered after five thousand people live in the city really requires the city to create zoned areas that would accommodate higher-density developments. And so the SROs don't really help with that, because you might have that sort of sprinkled throughout our low-density area, and that doesn't help us designate a zoned area for climate-friendly equitable communities. But it does, you know, help show the state that we have more accommodations for affordable housing as we move forward with housing updates and things like that.
Any other comments or discussion? Okay, then the chair will entertain a motion to accept what the planning commission has decided.
Now, just as a reminder, this is a type-four case. So this actually goes to the city council for a final action. So as you can see here in our suggested recommendation, it's just a recommendation to the city council that the planning commission's making. So as you say, this say as modified, because we've modified a few things.
All right, as modified.
Yeah, yeah.
I'd make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the modified DC twenty-three dice zero-two to the city council, because all applicable criteria are met, and all findings of fact are included into the staff report.
Seconded.
All right. Then moved and seconded, that we approve as modified. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that makes it official. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing for the new city park recommendations. I will open that public hearing at eighteen fifty-two, no, fifty-seven, I'm sorry. Let's see. All right. And all preceding proceeds were as follows. Required disclosures will be read. Staff will make a presentation. Anyone else who wishes to address the issue will be given the opportunity. Members of the public have three minutes. Finally, there will be a time for rebuttal by city staff. Commissioners may ask questions of staff or anyone else who testifies. Deliberations between commissioners will occur after the public meeting is closed. Sheena, it's your turn to guess.
All persons testifying will be deemed parties to the application and must provide their name and full mailing address. The city development code specifies applicable criteria to be relied upon in making a decision. Those criteria and findings of fact are in the city staff report. Public testimony should be limited to the criteria and findings of fact or to other city or state land use standards that the person testifying believes apply to the proposed land use action. Failure to raise an issue in person or in writing with sufficient detail to afford the hearing body or the applicants an opportunity to respond to that issue precludes appeal to the city council or Land Use Board of Appeals or to seek damages in circuit court due to a condition of approval. Before the conclusion of the initial evidentiary hearing, any participant may ask the planning commission for an opportunity to present additional relevant evidence or testimony that is within the scope of the hearing. The hearing body shall grant the request by scheduling a date to finish the hearing, a continuance to a time and date soon, or by leaving the record open for additional evidence or testimony.
Thank you very much. Okay, does any of the commission wish to declare a potential or actual conflict of interest? Do any members of the commission wish to report any site visits or ex parte contacts? Yes.
I walked by the site yesterday and took a look at it, and it looks good.
Okay.
As a member of the Parks Commission also, we visited the site and walked through it.
Okay, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the jurisdiction of the commission to hear this matter? Okay, does any member of the audience wish to challenge the impartiality or ex parte disclosures of any member of the commission? Okay, Matt, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Chair. Fellow commissioners, Matt Street presenting this evening for staff. The project before you today is located southerly of Millersburg Drive and easterly of Sedona Road, as shown here on the slide. The zoning on the site is residential low, and the area surrounding the property is also zoned residential low. Now, before we really dive into this project here tonight, it's important to understand the background of this project. Our master parks plan identified a need for a new park in North Millersburg to assure that folks all have an even walking distance to a local park, and we had a real lack of that in Northern Millersburg. So the city bought the property in 2020. Now, why and how we got that property is a long story we're not going to go into tonight. Some of you might remember. But, uh, we own the property, let's just leave it at that. So the same time that year, um, I'm sorry, hang on, I jumped ahead. So in 2022, the city won a grant from the Oregon State Parks to do outreach, a concept plan, and a land use approval for this park. So that same year, we released a survey to the folks in North Millersburg and asked them what features they would like to see in the park. Now, that greatly guided the design of the park. We didn't come into the design of this park with any preconceived ideas of what the city wanted to see there. Instead, this was a park designed by the folks who lived around it. So the city then held two Parks Commission meetings. As Carol said, just in full disclosure, Carol's a member of our Parks Planning Commission as well, and we have the chair of the Parks Planning Commission here tonight as well, in case any of you had any questions about that process or how they arrived at the features they're showing in the concept plan. So the final product that the Parks Commission review came up with is what we call the preferred concept. There's a big version of it here behind me, because it's kind of hard to see on the slide sometimes. We'll have it on the slides as well. And you had a version of it passed out in your staff report as well. So now to clarify something, the Parks Commission review, or the planning commission review, is intended to make sure that this project meets the criteria and that the criteria from our code for a site development review are satisfied. It is not really to discuss the features inside that park. That's really the, uh, the amenities and features of the park is really the purview of our Parks Commission. Now, if any of these features are specifically standing in the way of satisfying criteria, then by all means, we should be talking about it. But other than that, we're not really asking if you, you know, like the features in the park. We're just here to ask if you think it meets the criteria. So with that, let's take a look at the project description here real quickly. The project is for a conceptual park design. And what you see here is basically a bubble diagram that's showing generally what's proposed and generally where it's going to be. The site is four-point-four acres, and the Parks Commission helped us determine that the park should have a trail, a playground, a larger shelter with restrooms attached, a smaller shelter without any restrooms attached to it, lots of landscaping, and some benches, and some recreational features. You see some recreational features on here, specifically cornhole and bocce ball. This isn't to guarantee we're not married to that, but whatever rec features went in there should be similar to those in use, because that's what the Parks Commission really considered as the characteristics and features of recreational features and amenities like those. So as we mentioned previously, the planning commission needs to vote tonight based on whether or not this satisfies the criteria. So let's walk through those real quickly. We'll start with the use. The first criteria says that the use has to be one that's allowed in that zone. This is residential low. Parks are a permitted use in that zone. We also have to satisfy all the zoning standards in that zone, so let's walk through those. First is the height. Now, this is a concept plan, so we don't have elevations of what the structures are actually going to look like or how high they're actually going to be. But the tallest feature in this park is likely going to be the proposed shelter, and the height limit is thirty-five feet. And you'd be hard-pressed to have a shelter be taller than thirty-five feet, so we feel it complies with the height requirements from the zone. The next one is setbacks, and the concept plan shows that all the primary structures, sorry, I should be pointing over here, that all the primary structures are going to be well away from the edges of the property, and so all setbacks for structures should easily be met. Last is lot coverage, and lot coverage basically says that you can't cover more than fifty percent of a lot with what we call an impervious surface. Impervious is a fancy word, meaning basically the water can't soak through it. So roofs, paving, parking, water can't soak through that, but grass, other landscape features, it absolutely can. And this park definitely shows impervious and pervious surfaces, but it's well under the fifty percent requirement. So we don't feel that's going to be a difficult criteria to meet for this conceptual plan. Next, the project cannot create negative impacts, including traffic, noise, dust, on the surrounding community. So on this park, the site for the parking includes onsite, off-site, street parking. So there's places for cars to park outside of the street, and that should help minimize any on-street parking that could potentially result in surrounding communities. We've got eleven spaces here, which should be plenty for the features that we've got. And that brings me to my next point. The Parks Commission was very careful to look at the kind of amenities that are in here. And they very specifically designed this so that none of these features were going to be a real regional draw. Now, what would that possibly mean? If we had a splash pad in here, you might have people driving up all the way from Albany to play on the splash pad. We're not proposing a splash pad here. We don't have any features here that we think are going to cause people from other communities to drive here and visit. This is really a neighborhood park, designed in a neighborhood scale. We're expecting most people who come to this park to walk to it with their dogs or their kids, ride their bike to it. Some will drive. If you're, you know, holding a party here for your kids, you'll drive your car. That's fine, we've got on-street parking. But the amenities themselves help act to mitigate any off-street parking impacts that could potentially result. So on, uh, noise as well, parks and homes are generally considered compatible uses next to each other. Clearly, you want parks to be as close as you can get them to homes, and so those are usually considered compatible. But a park can indeed be noisy at times. And again, the mitigation for that noise is baked right into the amenities that the Parks Commission chose. There's no bandstands, there's no amphitheaters proposed here, there's no sports fields that would have lighting and a lot of people visiting it. So a lot of the noisier features, pickleball, noisy things like that, weren't included in this by design because of its close proximity to other homes. We also have different features baked into the design that mitigate noise impacts to an extent. We have plantings around the outside as well, very similar to like you would see in the Millersburg Park today. So the last one is dust and glare. Staff doesn't anticipate any dust or glare. The whole site will be landscaped or paved, and so that should address any dust issues. And we don't anticipate any glare, because there's really no glass that's going to be involved in any of these features. The next criteria talks about the need for adequate utilities to exist near the site. We have adequate facilities that exist in Millersburg Drive today. A water meter will be required, of course. A storm master plan was not included in this concept design stage, but we've added a condition of approval for it. We would have done it anyway as part of the next stage, which is the final design stage, but we've added a condition just to make sure that that drainage plan is included and that there's no drainage impacts to the surrounding communities that will come out of that. Additionally, we've added conditions of approval to make sure that all the standards for those utilities are going to be met appropriately. So the next criteria talks about access, and this park has been designed with pedestrian and vehicular access in mind. There is a sidewalk as part of the project that will bring folks in from Millersburg Drive on foot into the park site, as well as a driveway that will bring folks in from Millersburg Drive. The Parks Master Plan also calls for a trail someday to be put to the east of this park site. Now, that trail is not part of this park. It's not proposed with this park. But what we wanted to explain to the planning commission is we do have a few... But what we wanted to explain to the planning commission is we do have a future pedestrian connection planned into this park. We probably won't even build that pedestrian connection because it goes nowhere right now, but there's a spot for it someday. So if and when that future trail is built, there will be a pedestrian connection to that trail, so it will someday connect. But the trail's not part of the project. Some people feel pretty passionately about that trail, so I want to be sure that was clear. Okay, the next criteria addresses possible concerns with visual screening. A condition of approval was added to this project that says that sixty percent of the parks borders with the homes needs to be fully screened with vegetation at fifteen-year growth maturity. How did we arrive at sixty percent? I basically went out and looked at the existing park that we have here and tried to use about the same number that I see in that park right now. Maybe that's not the right number. If the planning commission thinks it's too aggressive, we could back it off. If you don't think it's aggressive enough, we could bump it up. But right now, the project calls for sixty percent of that at fifteen years' growth. And again, that's similar to the existing Millersburg Park, and they're going to have to show us in the final landscape plan for this exactly how they're going to meet that condition of approval. That's not uncommon to be, a condition of approval we would add for lots of other projects. So in order to assure that the standards from our development code are met, we've added a couple more conditions of approval to this project, specifically that the parking lot include parking lot landscaping, which is required in our code. But we want to make it clear that they have to conform with the landscaping requirements for parking areas. And of course, as I previously mentioned, that a drainage plan be submitted prior to construction as well. So with that, that concludes my presentation. I did pass out a memo for this item as well. We did get an email from a concerned neighbor about some of the amenities that we were proposing in this park. Again, that's one of the reasons I wanted to make it clear to the planning commission. We're not really talking about the amenities here today. We're just talking about whether or not it meets the criteria, but we passed that out because it was provided and needs to be part of the record. So with that, staff recommends approval. I'm here for any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Okay, I'll now open public testimony. Anyone who wishes to make testimony in favor of the application, please come forward. Okay. Anyone opposed to the application? Who would like to come forward and speak? Now's your chance. Matt, anyone online?
Let's check. Anybody out there online that wanted to speak on the park? Oh, sorry, I also have the consultant who helped us with the parks master plan online, if you have any questions for her as well. I'm not seeing anybody on mute.
Okay. So then I guess the chair will entertain a motion if we can get a...
We got to close the hearing first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's all right.
I've got a question.
Okay.
So since there's going to be new parking there, are we required to have charging stations? Or conduit for them?
Yes, I didn't think about that, but yeah, we would. That'll have to be part of the final plan. We'll have power to the park already for all the lighting and the restrooms and everything else, so there won't be that much of an inconvenience. But yeah, you're right. We're going to have to run conduit for possible future charging stations, yeah. This is proposing eleven. The final plan may have a little more, may have a little less, depending on what we end up getting in there in the final plan. The final version of the plan, by the way, will come before our city council as well for them to take a look at once that moves forward, and we're hoping to move forward with grant funding for the final plan and then grant funding for the construction of it as well. We don't anticipate that's going to happen too quickly. I know a lot of folks are excited about this park and want to see it get built. It's probably going to be a few more years, unfortunately, before we can get around to that, but you got to start somewhere, and we started with our concept plan.
Okay, anything else? All right, then I guess I'll close the public hearing at nineteen fifteen. And let's see. Any deliberation from the commission as to how to go about this issue? Okay, then, Matt?
I'm sorry, you want a recommendation, don't you? There you go.
There we go. Okay, so chair, entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion that based on the findings of fact in the staff report and the conditions of approval, the proposed project satisfies the applicable criteria and standards and that the planning commission approves site plan SP two-three dash zero-three with the conditions of approval.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, no? And the motion is passed. Okay, so next item is planning update. Are there any planning updates or are you about out of breath?
No, 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 I could go on for quite some time if you wanted me to. We had a couple more land use applications turned in towards the end of the year and towards the beginning of the year. Another one came in just today. And so we are planning on having two additional items at the February planning commission hearing that are already kind of slotted in, and they should be exciting ones, that you're going to have a good time with them. That's the extent of my update. I didn't approve any type-two cases last month to update the commission on, and so that's, that's the only update I have.
Okay, great. Okay. Well, then that's all the agenda items we have for this evening. I'm going to head and adjourn the meeting at nineteen seventeen. And thank you all for being here and have a great New Year.
Thank you, Kirsty.
Twenty-three and start doing some good stuff in twenty twenty-four.
My pleasure, Matt.